All right, folks, it is June thirteenth at six thirty minutes. We'll have a straight call this meeting to order. Just a quick reminder, if you are here and have not yet signed in, please take a second to do that. We're looking to have everybody's info there. And then, of course, if you're writing a public comment on this, opportunities over that up there as well. So something for you to say.
Oh.
So we've got a quick local. So it's going to start with the table today. General judge. June. Apparently, you were registered one.
In the vice district.
They want to request. Look, Ernest.
And then welcome to all our guests in person and online. Really grateful that you're spending your time. You see me thinking about services that I work with the district. So to get us as quick stop.
As we gather together, we gather ourselves around agreements that we chose from courageous conversations about race. And for our agreements are stay engaged, experience discomfort, be vulnerable, speak your truth, and accept and expect and accept non-approach. And on to the recognition. Which is the lowest. We in the Tuculpa School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, that we work, learn, play, and the bush people of Seattle, the DeLomishin Knuckle Shoot people, half the president of honor of red to the land itself, and the DeLomishin Knuckle Shoot tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility to the stewardship of this land, and we strive to work alongside the Wash and a lot of people who have been working here since time in the morning. Further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Latin Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Latin Brown people were informed and guided, working against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary and involuntary traffic force and undocumented people in the building what we refer to as the United States. At the school district, at the school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically and firmly enforced and create inequities among the peoples.
Okay, now I invite you, if you would like. Right, so on to launch the next agenda.
But I can move very switch. The presentation section A then move it ahead of the question only presentation so that folks that are here to give presentations can read the.
Sounds good for making a second to that. So on our favor, a group of the agenda with that.
All right.
All right. All right, so now we'll move to our public comment portion of the meeting. As a reminder, we will join us online. There are running different ways to our public comment. And as always, an email is going to be ahead of time. It can be read by myself or whatever number of four. If you are joining us online, you can use that raise hand function to let us know that you would like to alter public comment. And the chat is now offer open. You can type your name in the chat. So we have a few public comments so far. And we have received one. They're right, so I will go ahead and start with that one. This public comment comes from Sean Riley. My name is Sean Riley. I'm a National Board Certified Teacher at Foster High School. I'm ready to rigorously endorse the composting work that Jose Vancay Martinez has initiated at Foster. This program has had three major benefits. It's greatly reduced food waste at Foster. This helps students in the school reduce its carbon footprint on a clean plan. It has increased student leadership, not only has it led to disappears, but many students work in cafeteria and out to educate and assist students to do this work right. It has increased student engagement amongst students. They interact with each other more, feel more empowered, and understand they are the center of this work. This work should continue and can be improved by moving compost dumpster to the foster dumpster bay. Relatively, the dumpster system needs to be improved in the Bay of Polo Code. And I ask the school board to explore this. In conclusion, throw your support behind Foster's NASA composting system. Sure, and pleasure, please help make the dumpster bay up to code. Thank you for your service, thank you for your time. Thank you so much for your time, Sean. And for your, you want to come and see. Great day. Okay, so we have just two in-person public comments. Is there anyone joining us online? That would like to offer a public comment before we go to the in-person. So we will start with Adeline Sanchez from Shell Walter.
Hello, everybody. My name is Adeline Sanchez, and I am here on behalf of the 286 members of the Tuculpa Education Association. Two letters were delivered to the school board directors on Thursday, May twenty fifth. This statement is to reiterate the concerns of our members' voice in those letters. As we look towards the twenty twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, our members have made it clear that we need leaders in teaching and learning who are willing to look beyond the data and truly value and appreciate our unique community to best support student learning. In order to understand the needs of the programs overseen by teaching and learning, there must be collaboration and trust between the administrators and educators that the department supports. Our members have called for change. We have leadership willing to listen to those of us who see the value in each student. We see beyond their test data and know there are so many other ways to define our students. The leadership of teaching and learning should be willing to share their philosophy of learning while also being open to learning from the people in our district facilitating the learning. As educators, we know learning from mistakes is critical to future success. The leadership in teaching and learning must be open to admitting to mistakes and listening to the impacts on our students, staff, and family. Our teaching and learning leadership must share the values of our district. Embracing the diversity of our community means understanding that not all students learn the same. That support is required for some students, such as our McKinney Bento, multilingual learners, and sped students. More than anything, our students need leaders who truly welcome the voices of our community in decision-making. The decisions, the decisions about how to support these students can't be made behind closed doors. In the Tuculpa School District, it is common to hear that our diversities are strength. That is only as true as our leader's commitment to honoring a wide range of voices. We need leadership who is willing to listen, learn, work collaboratively, and support the students who work closest with our students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And now my Joe.
Hey, Joe Camacho. I'm one of the environmental science teachers at Foster High School. I'm also resident of Tuculpa. Can I add three topics to comment on? First is the SRO program, transportation, and then also the composting program. After reviewing the SRO program planning and agreement documents, I have significant concerns about the program and its implementation within the district. First, the primary role of the SRO program is to build relationships with students on a regular, regular basis. I bring attention to this goal because I've not seen this goal set as a priority of the Tuculpa Police Department anywhere except in the school building. For the past year, I've attended almost every public event that the Tuculpa Police Department has advertised. And I even hosted the National Night Out event last summer for my neighborhood. I've seen firsthand how the Tuculpa Police Department has significant room for improvement when it comes to being intentional about creating inclusive spaces for our community members with limited English proficiency and for teens and students. Additionally, the SRO agreement document states that the Tuculpa Police Department will acknowledge the history of harm and understand individuals intersecting identities. I'd like to know, I'd like to learn exactly how the Tuculpa Police Department will accomplish these goals with the SRO program. I'm also curious how the school district will evaluate the efficacy of the SRO program, what standards or guidelines will be used, and who will be responsible for completing the evaluation. The SRO agreement outlines the form, that formal complaints regarding the conduct of the SRO will be processed through the Tuculpa Police Department. Does this remove the Tuculpa School District from being involved in investigating how our students and or staff are impacted by the conduct of the SRO? Next, I want to give a huge shout out to the transportation team. The environmental science classes attended many field trips this year, too many to count, sorry to my colleagues. And we were able to make every single one of them a success with the hard work and dedication of our bus drivers, dispatch, and transportation director. Also want to emphasize the importance of supporting and completing the application for the twenty twenty-three Clean School Bus Grant Program, which you'll learn more about later tonight. We need to invest in zero emission school buses and zero emission charging infrastructure and work with the cities to solve any zoning issues associated with building those, with those investments. Finally, I want to congratulate Jose, he's a student of mine for the past three years. He's a true steward and environmentalist. He's worked tirelessly on behavior change and education associated with the composting program at Foster High School. I'm inspired by his dedication and part of all the work he did to make the program a success. Thanks, y'all.
All right, looks like we have Sandra Dixon Goines up in public comment. Sandra, you should be in mute now.
I apologize. I didn't see the unmute. Hi, my name is Sandra Dixon Goines. I work at Shell Walter Middle School. I have actually, I wanted to comment on the SROs. We have been meeting diligently addressing the concerns of SROs in the school. And we actually have come up with a plan in order to meet the concerns and needs for the SROs to come back into the schools, being a part of the community, building relationships, being at different events, and just overall being a positive, you know, positive presence at and in the Tuculpa School District and the schools.
Thank you very much, Sandra. All right, are there any additional public comments that are online or anyone in person? Okay, all right, then we will move to move on to the agenda. As always, there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting for additional public comment. If in our discussion something that she wants to provide, any group like or questions to learn. So now we'll move to our report. So we'll start our recent equity update.
Okay, I'll start with Mr. Joel Hill, and he's going to reflect on recent training with two buildings.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Coyle, I'm the principal at Thorndyke. Back on May fifteenth, there were two schools, teams that traveled to Michigan to attend a culturally responsive school leadership conference that took place for three days. On day one, we reviewed the history of colonizers love to describe, but not be described, and love to be judged, judged but not be judged. We talked about the origins of American bias, the history doctrine of discovery of fourteen ninety-three, valid, valid duellids debate of fifteen fifty-two, and understanding invisibility and the epistemology and bias. That was day one. Also, Dr. Mohammed Khalifa also invited us out to have some authentic Yemen food that night, which was a nice evening for folks to come together and discuss this important work. On day two, we discussed the unlearning that is requires, unlearning that requires learning. What are you thinking may need to be unlearned in your own system? And with that is unstated but understood truths in your school. We worked in breakout groups and had thorough discussions about this important work, educators are public partners, not public servants. The role of initiatives and system of reproduction, expression of whiteness, and visualizing, visualizing, visualizing white racial epistemology. And on day three, we're to begin cultivating humanizing curriculum. Day three, we discussed the three dimensions of culturally, culturally responsive pedagogy, and three hiring culturally responsive staff, which we, I know this, we've had discussions about that as a, during some of the PSESD work, and culturally responsive classroom observations, and using the Janus and framework in a racial tools for equity and culturally responsivenessness. The resources, there were multiple resources that we did to, to discuss this work in our breakout groups from the book of Culturally Responsible Leadership by Dr. Mohammed Khalifa. We discussed about PLC questions, teacher evaluations, again, as I just mentioned, eight points on fostering culturally, culture, cultural responsive leadership and academic excellence, two checklists for organizing culturally responsive schools. And then there was also on day three, which was one of the lessons we discussed were conducting a check with the auditors. And in closing, we discussed that culturally responsive pedagogy is a process of academically rigorous teaching that builds explicitly, explicitly on what students of color know and how they approach learning in a way that specifically engages their cultural identities and community relationships. It was a very jammed, packed briefing. But I will say, I think the, the big takeaway for me was the epistemology and bias, and really where racism and bias was really where it came from. There were a lot of wonderings that we walked away with, and you know, what do we do with this, with this information moving forward? I spoke to Dr. Khalifa for a few minutes after the, at the conclusion of the conference, and if invited, he would be interested in doing some work in our district at some point. There you have it. That's my present presentation.
Thank you, Michael.
How do you view that experience that you had with kind of the online training that we've been doing with Dr. Rogers and Canas?
I really thought that the, the work that we've been doing with the PSESD group and the leadership conference really segue into each other really well in terms of the foundation of what we've been working on here. And the stuff that we really, we did a really big dive in on the route where this all comes from, right? And I think it really ties in very well with the work that we've been doing.
In case about the scanning and the dancing framework, did you guys, were there any conclusions? I mean, is it, is it a good framework for observation for equity and cultural responsiveness? Does it need improvement? Did we have any discussion on?
You know, I did do a search on, I did, I pulled up the rubrics, and there wasn't, to be honest, it was a whole lot on there. There's stuff about culturally responsive practices, but it wasn't very specific.
So that sounds like it. It's the conclusion was this scenario that needs some improvement.
I would, I would agree with that, I guess.
Maybe two little questions right now, so we'd be like, no thanks right now. But so like, having the opportunity to go to a conversation, it was really, like, just a lot of people took away as a visual about, sort of, the building near as a district leader. Kind of what do you see as one of your big takeaways? What's a kind of a little part question, kind of a big takeaway that you see as a big opportunity for our district? And as a district leader, do you feel empowered to really start to make some of the transformational change that likely was, you know, discussed and reflected on and thought about at this moment?
I think the, the, the big piece for me was the epistemology, like where this all sort of came, where this came from, right? And we have, we have some work to do, and the thing about, I think for me, it's like, okay, we started, we did some of this work, and how do we, how do we carry the work forward? That's, that's the wondering that I walked away with. It was extremely informational, and the work that we did as groups were really, were really critical to the things that happened.
Do you have some ideas for steps starting in September?
I think continuing the work that we've been doing with our PSESD work will be critical and important.
It sounds like there's some epistemology.
I know, it's a tough word. We're now.
Bringing some of that in addition.
Yeah, I think that's really important. I think when you're able to break it down at the foundational roots of where this, where this originated, where all this bias and racism came from, it really puts into context in the, in the, in the story. And one of the things I think was very different, the deep dive into the, where it came from, where it originated, was, was really, was the, was the piece that I really enjoyed the most about it, about the conference.
I feel like a bit of this, that this thing was never an equity disruption for me, but like, just setting aside time just to wander, right? So just to say, great, there's a lot of waters that even probably the other folks that we sent this had. Now, what are we going to do with that? And just give yourself the time to sit in space together and just be curious about all the possibilities and envision a little bit. So I think we often jump from something like this to what are the actionable steps? Because, you know, actually, you're going to get somewhere, right? And forget what else it takes to find. It's worth it, you know, time to just sit back collectively and say, wow, let's sit in this for a second. And you're not vision about what this means, and then what are those action steps that have been proposed to the organization?
One of the other things that I thought was with the work that we did with the breakout groups is that we're not, it's, this isn't just specific to our district, obviously to our district. It's, you know, districts across the, the country are dealing with the same thing. There were a lot of folks from Michigan, the Michigan School District. And so it was really interesting to, to have those conversations and that dialogue and those courageous conversations about what their, some of the things that they're facing as well, some of the challenges. Thank you.
I think that said, what is the second part of written equity? All of that to the. I do not this. But in August, we're having our entire racist summit, being a client and presented by our PSESD partners, Dr. Rogers, Art, and Dr. Canas. So if you wanted to share anything else about that, like, I know it's coming up, Dave's.
It is coming up on August thirtieth, and it's going to be from nine to eleven thirty, held in the PAC, and the agenda is going to be finished with the PSESD, and we will be sharing that out for our kick out day.
I think it's exciting. Thank you. And anything else? Any good questions? And I guess, so the board has also, like, been engaging in professional learning with PSESD. We're taking a tiny break during the summer, and then we're going to be with them in August, kind of piggybacking off of them, being here for the summit to really think about what our continued year of learning is going to look like for the more to understand about that. All right, that was a setup update.
Great, I have a few health updates from our. So a couple of updates on COVID pieces and then one other. So COVID cases were saying there is new P twelve COVID guidance. Give age anticipates that school will not make changes until next school year. So summary of changes that they anticipate coming up for next year. They removed COVID nineteen case reporting requirement for cases that are not tested by the K bar school or childcare. They've removed a reference to the Secretary of Health mask order, which ended on April third, twenty twenty-three. They removed a reference to say yes COVID test program, which ended May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. They removed a recommendation, removed recommendations referencing the CDC COVID nineteen immunity levels. I think part of that is just because that data, that website may be going away, so it may be difficult to get that information. And they added a new section with considerations for flu, RSV, and respiratory illnesses. So I think we're kind of pivoting to, off of COVID nineteen to the others around flu and RSV. So those were the, kind of the synopsis of COVID. And the other was, there was, I probably did read something in the paper about measles case on June, that was kind of in the Seattle area, which measles can obviously be very transmissible without a public. So I didn't see a follow-up on it, if they found a person, they just had a suspected case that they're in kind of different places where the person was at different times, so. But that was all I had for the health update from.
Questions from the side? Well, okay, so that brings us to our consent agenda. Thank you. I'm doing really well this. All right, it's standard approved. So now we'll move to section eight, and move up before our questions only. So we'll start with the Foster High School composting program.
Hi, my name is Jose, and as far as my project for independent studies, environmental science, I started the composting program. Next slide. So organic waste, which is captured in compostable containers is collected during both lunches of Foster High School with health arms, student volunteers. Organic waste is sorted into green bin, and the bin is taken out daily after second lunch. That is by the pool and fifteen to ten, twenty dollars of portable silver, my toes is collected every day. So how did we start the program? We identified an need to reduce organic waste going to the landfill, because the organic waste going to landfills increases the greenhouse proper pollution. And so I partnered with City of Tuculpa to learn more about the solutions, so you get materials needed for the program. And I met with administration to get permission and teachers' classes, and to get students' volunteers from recruitment, as well as community partners. So students are always excited to learn more about the composting program and want to, like, compost within our school. And when sorting the six are happening, we always able to teach them what they can do next, next time on what is compostable, and just can be thrown out or recycled. And feels like we're making a real change with the Foster, which is a good school. And for the future, I hope that we're always to divert all the foster school organic waste, and I hope that the program can continue throughout the other schools and districts and the city of Tuculpa. And I have two questions from the board. First one is why is it better to compost organic waste rather than listen to the landfill? So diverting organic waste into composting systems, it naturally reduces the amount of greenhouse gases being produced in now fields. When organic waste is thrown into the garbage. When organic waste is thrown into the garbage at the end and in landfill. As organic waste is the composes methane, the greenhouse gas is created and released into the atmosphere. Our climate is currently changing to an increase of greenhouse gases in the atmosphere. It's better to compost organic waste rather than to send it to the landfill to produce the amount of greenhouse gases created by our waste. And the second question is, do you have any ideas of any other organic waste that could be composted? So organic waste is generally food waste, but we also compost napkins, paper bags and paper plates, boats used during lunch. We can increase some amount of organic waste by collecting food waste from kitchen and from the culinary classes. Additionally, we can compost organic waste created by the garden program. With our current capacity, we can collect waste from our lunch services. I would encourage the district to invest in ways to increase the capacity of composting program, only not only at foster high school, but every building in the district. I would encourage the board to learn more about the RE plus uh pledge, and which will be signed by the mayor. Um and the King County Strategic Climate Action Plan specifically sections about composting. Also check how House Bill seventeen ninety-nine, which requires local government collection of compost, which will include updating building codes to be able to collect the compost. Thank you.
That's okay. Reiterate what other folks already said, um just one amazing work, um not only just to like. Be a leader and try to, you know, advance this, you know, work, but just like really being able to connect all of the different people and entities to really get this done. Um I'm super interested to hear your thoughts, whether tonight or in the future, of what you can get my take to really scale what you're doing at Foster to all of the other buildings. Because I mean, I think that's something that we definitely want to get behind. Um have a, be your expertise in thinking about how we could actually do that.
So um to be able to like include it in other schools, um my deal to be, be able to go to the schools and present to students there, like. Um even creating activities to get the students um excited about composting and encourage them to compost as well. Um and then other buildings, like talk with um. Of those with like the benefits of composting and with that, um get them to like understand of like what like the situation can't chant. The change that I can create within composting instead of like throwing it all out.
Yeah, I think, I think you're absolutely right about that. That's, I mean, we are an educational institution, so the way. Credit is to education in the building so that the students and everybody can understand why it's important. Because I was uh, it's interesting, uh looking at your presentation, I was kind of doing some research and you alluded to it is around. So why is it better to take the food waste and put it in compost as opposed to put it in a landfill? And I think my understanding is the difference between anaerobic and aerobic composite decomposition. So when you put it in landfill, it's buried and there are all kinds of other stuff. And so the ability for oxygen to get down there and decompose it in a way that's more environmentally friendly is problematic. And so that therefore you end up with what you're describing is the methane that goes up, which is highly problematic as opposed to, you know, in regular decomposition, there is some carbon dioxide released, but it's much less. So anyway, it was, it was, um I always appreciate when, you know, students are bringing things to our attentions that I can learn from as well. And so, um yeah, you do, you do a great job and I think, yeah, absolutely, we should be um. Spreading the word to all schools and and, you know, maybe, I don't know, are you, are you here next year, are you?
I am, yes.
You are here next year?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great to help, you know, uh educate the other, other students around the district and get this going to all the other schools, so good job.
Thank you.
You said, you mentioned uh you partnered with State of the Land to get um materials and such, was it, were there any materials that we need to purchase or that um Foster had to like? Change out, you want to observe, you want to play that to?
No, the city of Toquilla provided everything at no cost at all.
So what will it take to get the dumpster bay?
Uh I'm not entirely sure about that. I have to get in touch with uh custodians about it too, because that was the clean issue that we had at first. Uh which became with the switch and of having the cards be placed by the pool.
Because I would probably have to be at all five schools, but.
Yeah.
Well, personally, I mean, the, our local um place management is the one who picks up, and so. On a residential, there is a separate compost bin, so why it couldn't be a similar compost bin in the commercial space would be the only. Seems like that's not that big of a stretch, because the trucks are already coming around collecting compost literally across the street and so they could do this and. But anyway, that is a discussion with the city.
Is there any thought about what would like to actually do some of the composting ourselves?
I mean, it would be great if you guys compensated as well, because like even then, it's like, um even a little bit can create a big change and how much um it can you be producing if that's just. Cut away in landfills.
And then it can go back to the garden, it can just be a full circle, beautiful thing, all right, hashtag buy. Any other questions? Love it, thank you. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so next is our social media update for students, then yeah, this is a given. If that's not mine, I would. Always be sad, because Dennis has worked so hard on this. And I'm, I mean, I know it's silly, but I kind of want to table it, because I want Dennis to be here to, for this, is that okay with everyone? Okay, okay, we're going to table this one next time. Um uh yeah, so just so, um uh Dr. Borisade and our senior president Dennis have been working all year long. Um to really just get an assessment of uh the mental health of our students. Um and so, and Dennis was being really intentional about ensuring that we're getting voices from all of the schools. In fact, a more elementary participation than any of those schools we saw, so it should be, I guess, they represent more of a student body for sure. Um but anyway, so we'll, we'll see what's in the back of the link he's here to be able to share of the work that he's done on this. Um so now, uh take us then to our, do you need anything else to table that? Especially that's it. Oh, I need a motion to table. Okay, all the favor. And forgive me, I'm trapped there. Okay, um now moving to the SRO presentation.
All right. So tonight we have a couple of books that will give some updates on our SRO plan. Uh we included that in there. Um one is kind of a bit of a agreement. Which, you know, we have, this has been a collaborative effort that we have had between the city and the school district. We had a group of um staff, parents and students working at this in the fall and then throughout the spring, we've been going through the process of looking at what employment action plan would be. Chief Travers here to be able to give uh some updates to, and I believe we might have Mr. Blanton. Online, he and Ms. Britt Kerr were our co-chairs uh for this group. And then Ms. Jones, who um already spoke up, was also on the committee. Up down, so. Questions that we may have. Um the, one of the big keys was really looking at some of the language. And I wish you might have made some comments about that, and that was actually some really good dialogue and conversation, especially with students uh in the spring. So in the vision mission segments, it was very important to include um what the traumatic uh events may be for students and recognizing. Uh a lot of that um concern that people may have. Um Chief was um very open about that too, of, of, of trying to understand that perspective of students and. Especially birth families and students who may be coming from other countries experiencing. Um having experiences that may not be with our department, but still interacting with at least other countries and they carry those experiences here with us. So um chief, if you want to have an economics and it's Mr. Blanton, yeah, Mr. Blanton is also on fire.
Hi, I'm Eric Dreber. I'm the chief of police for our community's police department. I have the honor of serving our community in the capacity of chief of police. Um this has been several year endeavor that began with the pandemic. When no one was in schools and we finished up uh that school year with officers being out of the schools because of pandemic. And then during the timeframe where students were out of school, uh the conversation came up regarding uh the. I guess the uh appropriateness of school resource officers in the schools and what purpose they serve and how they can serve our youth in the community through the schools. And so utilizing facilitators, uh they, we engaged in conversations, we being the school district, the students, the parents. Uh the teachers and members of the police department. And trying to come together to find out what actually is best for our students and how can we best serve them in a law enforcement capacity? And uh recently, earlier this year, we uh the fruits of that effort were this agreement that is for the board. And it means for us to formalize exactly how we will engage with students and provide service uh to the students and to the school district. And in addition to that, uh if we were to bring officers back into the schools to help uh build those relationships up with the students related to law enforcement. We would need to have some sort of implementation plan that allows for us to do so in the, the most efficient, but also safest and, and least harmful way to the students. Right now, the police department has a staffing shortage, so we would have to implement using a hybrid program that we're looking at. Which would mean that we aren't going to immediately be assigning our school resource officers, which we still have our two resource officers from pre-pandemic. Uh we would, uh we don't have the staffing to outright assign them as we come into the new school year for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. What we would need to do is work through more of an opportunistic uh schedule that when officers are working and the staffing allows. If we can pull them out of the schedule so that they can spend time with the schools and the students and putting together the programs that are talked about in the implementation plan. We would make that uh time available to them. Additionally, I've authorized them over time for them to be able to work on their own time. Uh if they are unable to come in uh and work with the students during their normally scheduled time, we would make time available to them. We wouldn't want that to be the barrier to building those relation, relationships and helping the school out. So we're excited about this opportunity to be able to work with the students again. While at the same time, um we want to be able to address the concerns of those that are impacted through traumatic experiences with law enforcement. Um we, there was a survey study that was done. Um I am under the understanding that that was provided to the board as uh we moved through the whole facilitation process. So you have the data and uh related to the uh impressions that students, teachers, family members have of law enforcement in the schools. And uh the, the overwhelming data that we saw was that there is a need for uh law enforcement in the schools and that there is a desire. Not by everyone, but by a, a overwhelming majority. But in that process, we do not want to miss the opportunities nor uh neglect the trauma and experiences that some of the students have had legitimately regarding office. Uh law enforcement experiences. So we need to create safe spaces and forums that allow for us to facilitate discussions around that. Um it can't simply be just law enforcement coming in and saying, we're going to be in room A one oh four this afternoon, come on by if you'd like. To engage in conversation, that, that's not going to work. Um we need to find somebody that is a trusted facilitator for the students and for family and or teachers. Uh anybody involved with the school district so that they can help us build upon that relationship. No one is expecting that uh those that have had traumatic experiences but from law enforcement are going to be singing our praises and singing. My uh however, we do believe that through those interactions, we can help minimize the, those moments when trauma might be further. By the presence of an officer, so if we can educate and make ourselves available to build those relationships. At least for the officers that are assigned there and hopefully broadening out to the cool police department, including myself and administration. That there becomes a general understanding as we build relationships up that we are there for the safety and for the well-being of the students and for all students. So. Uh I look forward to any questions you might have.
Mr. Blanton, uh do you have anything that you wanted to share as far as the process?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. No, I think the chief summed it up pretty well. Um nothing from me this time.
I can start.
Yes, okay.
So when I was looking at the, um I, I like the kind of admission statement that is in this, in this document, I think it's pretty good. Really good points in there um in terms of goals and that kind of stuff, the, the. The concerns I'm, and a lot of people have touched on this, is the, um is the potential trauma. And so, and if, if people have touched on the two, I think main groups is, we have a lot of refugee students that have come from countries where, you know, most of them are here because of some oppression that happened in the country. And frequently the police of that country are the, you know, the people who kind of enforce it. So I think they have to be really sensitive to that particular uh group. And then the other group, of course, is just the folks that have been in this country for many years and that. Either personal or family, or just watching the news, traumatic experience with, with law enforcement, so. And um so those are the two groups I'm particularly sensitive to, which is why I really, I'm glad that the, you know, the Black Student Union, for example, got. You know, a chance to really think about this and and work on this, and that's one of the groups that I think it was interesting when I was looking at their uh pros and cons, I think. Um they talk about limited to only a handful of training opportunities on school safety and opposite bias. Uh I assume they're talking about training for the SROs, is that?
So there's a whole, according to the um legislation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
It's a pretty long list. I mean, and uh we feel cheap about training the integrity of what might overlap can be the same, but. Um whether the food doctors or our own security, can the news security, can it be security?
Right.
Whether it includes or just your school security, we kind of have to go through that same.
Right, so it's a pretty, yeah, it's not like that particular concern, everyone understanding it, I think it was a number one. Is actually pretty well addressed in some of the recent legislation and the training that would happen, so that's, that's a good thing. The other, the, the group that I probably don't, maybe a little bit more difficult is the, you know, the refugees that are coming, because um. And that's been, I think, for us, probably require some facilitation with our family liaisons and, you know, you're talking about different approaches for how you can introduce it into the environment. And I think that's going to be one of the keys, and one of them is going to be probably working with the family is also get those small groups of students that may have come from countries where. Their problem is the, um the experience and, you know, work that through that issue. The other, I think I was, um I was thinking about this, you know, the key to this a lot is going to be. You know, how it's introduced and you referenced that, but that is that it's um, you know, obviously it can't be just somebody appears in the halls and start walking around, you know, it's got to be. You know, a lot of vegetation and re, uh speaking of students and particularly reaching out to these groups that have, you know, the potential of, of um. Trump having been, you know, in their lives before related to peace officer. And so, so that's, you know, we're talking about implementation plan, that's to me, one of the, one of the key things that is how it's communicated to everybody before. You know, it, it's, it starts and how that, how that works. And then I think uh Mr. Blatch also talked about, then how do we, how do we evaluate? Okay, so we have these goals about how it's being implemented and then we need to come back to these particular groups, particularly this like of us, and then the reproductions that. You know, how are you feeling about this? How is it working for you? What's not working? So I think that accountability is also going to be a key part of, of, of. Of of implementing this. And the other part of the communication, I think, for both our students and our community is going to be. You know, what, taking a step back, um you know, the whole issue is around safety of students. That's what we want, you know, that's our number one concern. And so. This is one of um, you know, if we have a uh an SRO and a couple of buildings, this is one of several many things that we're doing around. Um safety and so um you we are doing where we uh, you know, um will do, I mean, we have um. You know, with our um. Um projects, our buildings, you know, we thank the security for uh all the buildings. That's something that has been done. We have, you know, um hired some more uh social workers and counselors. For the buildings, because I know when we talk about these issues, it's always it's a multifaceted issue. So one of the things is. Is bringing mental health and we, you know, and we just talked talked about, uh we're gonna give a presentation from Dennis about um. You know, suggestions for mental health improvements in the system. Uh to help that, we've got um the safety task force coming back with uh some recommendations. We've got um. You know, sound transit, sort of, and that's. Sound discipline uh working with all our tools in terms of. Yeah, right. Okay, uh so uh. You know, I think it's, this is part of, like I said, it's part of a, you know, a bigger whole collection of things that as a district we're working on. To help our students and staff be and feel safe. And so this is not just one, one thing, you know, sometimes people complain, well, that's not gonna solve the problem. Yeah. You know, we're doing a lot of different things. And so that's going to be, I think, an important part of the um. Uh the communication plan is make sure this is a piece of what we're doing. It's not the whole thing. And um I think the other part, which I think we still need to do, have a little while we're still. You know, working on kind of how to implement some of the mental health recommendations from Dennis's group and. We'll be hearing some things from the safety task force. Also, you know, I know. Talking to some teachers, there's still some issues about, for example, how we do lockdowns, the technicalities of lockdowns, there's. You know, and that's been a big issue in Seattle, you know, when we go to a lockdown, what are the different lockdown notes, the total lockdown, the sit, you know, individual lockdown? How does that communication work? Do we have, you know, appropriate in some of our older buildings, the. You know, the mechanisms for locking is not necessarily totally understood by the people in the room. So. Anyway, this, all this is to say, this is part of a bigger, uh this one piece of the bigger picture, which I think. You know, and hopefully our communication director can kind of help, you know. Put together some of that kind of communication plan for how this goes out in a way that's going to be. Um understandable by students and the community as well. So um I think it's a good, you know, I mean, like um. Uh what we're doing here, but it is going to be. Important specifically how it's implemented. And I I would like to see definitely some more. Input from the kind of the refugee uh folks and those. They can be a little bit more difficult to communicate because they don't necessarily speak English. And showing that culture, but we have a staff that can communicate with them to help that attempt to, so. Those are my thoughts.
Do we have anyone that's in charge of? Security for the whole district? Where's the check building by double?
It's been building by building, but he's actually been talking about. Trying to figure that out to have a a point person.
Yeah, same. I have some some general thoughts that are still in my head. Um. Uh I think just to kind of where he where Dr. Martin left off, I mean. Addition of to here to our refugee families, I'm, you know, I'm curious, I know that y'all have went back and continue to get more input. You know, which is hard to get. Um you know, and I always think about are we getting, are we getting input from the right people? So one of the things I'm curious about is. Do we really believe that the voices of individuals who might. Have are most likely to come into contact in negative interactions with the police, were they present and or. Uh maybe students who are in our district that are receiving disciplinary action at a higher level, have they been taught to to get input on this particular program? Because again, those are the, those are the students, sound students, like. Those are students, right, that that are going to be impacted negatively, um potentially um by this program and often may not have an opportunity to serve. Or wouldn't feel comfortable even showing up to um a place in which, you know, um a person may be. Um you don't have to women acknowledge that, like. This is a a really difficult uphill battle, right? Because we have an institution of policing that literally was designed. To oppress people of color, right? That's literally the foundation of how policing came to be in this country. Um and so how do we change, how do we transform, how do we do all of that? So not only the narrative about what policing is here to do, but also like. How do we fix an institution that was literally designed up with that? So it's an uphill battle. I just think that. Um I think the, which I think then goes into also um opportunities for training and education, right? How are we educating not only folks in the police department? Around this understanding that, yeah, this institution that we are a part of was designed for all. Um and how do we, how do we start to transform that from within? Um and you know, then we have that same conversation around the school system, right, which also was designed in many ways to oppress, right, and to uplift awareness, right? And so um I think so much about this work, particularly as those institutions. Is about recognizing that person, being willing to really say, yeah, that is true. And now let's, now let's figure out how we. How we transform that, um or build something entirely different to the person. Um uh and then kind of speaking to the the training piece, um. Uh I'm a facilitator in my day job. I think training is so important. Um and um an hour long module, even ten of them, is not going to be enough. And so I think one of the things I'd be curious around implementation. Plan is how or what is the police department doing to really have communities of practice with your um folks around. Um how you're actually implementing and are these trainings actually changing hearts and minds? Or are they just giving folks information about the data of our racialization and policing? Um and you know, maybe it's not changing behaviors. Um so really, what what are the practices to reinforce what they're learning? Um and hopefully reflecting on themselves and policing as a system? Um.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. One is uh. Building on what Dave was saying with the. The experience of police. Our kids experience police outside of school. Chief Reivers' uh job is to make sure every place in Tackalua and beyond where his police officers are. They're presenting the right uh. The right process. It's different when you're meeting with someone who's just still in the car and. You're approaching them. It's different than when you're helping pass up the book kids that are playing on sidewalk. And um I've been in the interviews, uh citizen supervisor for the police department, because I did have concerns. And um I sat in on the interviews that Chief Reaver does with his officers. And let me tell you, if they don't fit the idea of being a community person. Of being uh looking at the the citizens as full human beings and helping them to be the best they can be. If if they are an officer that's going to do that for this community, he didn't hire him. And I've seen that happen. I've seen him just say, ah, that was something. Um and I've also seen um bring the ones in and have the the experience and the mindset. Um that we want here in Tackalua. So it's not only in our schools. That our police are trying to build those relationships and encourage people to be their best. Um but it's also in the whole community. So when the, when the police department is called onto my campus. Where I have a lot of refugees. It has not been an issue just because of the way the the officers approach the situation. There was some really calm, pulling way back. Um even if it's a situation where there could be some uh violence and some domestic violence or something going on. They really take a. A slow approach. And I think that's really helpful for a lot of our, the folks here in Tackalua that have been traumatized. Um that doesn't mean that they're going to get caught off guard. They're very careful. They. Um they don't usually come in one at a time. They come as a as a group. To make sure that they're all um supporting each other in any of these situations. So. You know, our kids are being exposed to the police department in many different ways. And I just. Want to affirm that our police department is really trying to not be like we see in the press. Um they're really trying to be the ones that. Help our citizens get what they need and follow the rules. And the the stories we hear about of the folks coming in to Tackalua and doing. Things that are wrong are not usually our type of people. They are people from outside. And so I think our our type of people are are responding well to the police department. And. I think that they are working hard to address the trauma that may already exist with folks. I don't know if that made any sense, but.
Yeah, so kind of like, so one of the comments that we shared with the um. Missures that run like, uh like, I had a likelihood of targeting um students, pre-assisted students. And I'm wondering if there's any um data that this department has around um. Any disparities around um targeting um black folks, whether white folks are, if there's any any data around that, what this department could offer. Um that could potentially say, you know what, here at Tackalua, we do do this differently. And we got this data to show that. Um one of the things that I can say about this guy is he loves David.
And so does the whole police department. They have all of these uh. Uh information that comes to into them all the time from folks who have been served by the support of these. And you can see exactly what all these people have said about that, what's going on. And um. He definitely looks at all the data things and shares it with whoever asks. So. I know you've given that to us before at COPCAMP, um that kind of data. I'm sure it was shared out with school district leaders.
Surely I can get that and provide that. I I would like to address uh attorney use targeting because that's not what we do. If we target anything, it is actions and behaviors. Um we're, we're not looking to target anything. We're looking to change behaviors. Try and help uh our community find their way back to a path that is contributing to community. Um a good example is you've seen, I I'm sure some some have seen recently, we've had a twelve-year-old that's been on a rampage. Uh terrorizing older peoples, especially older women, stealing their purses, uh in some cases assaulting them and running off and uh. The, the first thought for our officers was not, oh my gosh, we have to arrest this person. The first thought was out of compassion and, oh my gosh, what type of life has this poor person gone through? In order for them to believe that this behavior is appropriate. We look at root causes. Um we look at behavior, we look at uh the individual, not. What they're wearing, race, color, creed, religion, ethnic background. Um. We are directed by nine-one-one calls to go and try and help with with problems. And we have intervention programs, we have diversion programs, we have discretion that allows us to help individuals. And that's ultimately our goal. So I can gladly provide the stats that you're you're looking for. Um although I do believe that targeting is not a term that is actually appropriate in this situation because we're we're not targeting.
So I share that because that was language on our students. Um so I, you know, I think it's important to think about, you know, even if targeting. It's a, it's about perception, right? So if. If black young men, for instance, right, are coming or in contact with the police more often. Then whether there's real targeting or perceived targeting, it's still going to appear as if. Black boys are coming to contact with me more often, right? So um you know, I think, a- and so then maybe is that a, is that a problem because the police are.
Profiling?
Profiling, thank you. Um or is it because, you know, those behaviors that you mentioned before? Uh and then I think that goes back to my comment earlier about some of this is all just so deeply rooted in the institution of policing of the whole, right? Um and so and maybe it's just awareness around that. So like, there are so many institutions that do target people of color. So I don't think that's a word that. Um even if that's not going to feel true um to the to the books, and I think there are probably ways that you can communicate that, right? Um um but it still feels real and true to the people um in the student set within our, or our community.
Our goal is to help dispel perception while at the same time holding accountability when the perception is actually true. So. Uh we can get that data for you.
Any additional questions, comments? For now, I'm feeling Mr. Blanton.
Yeah. Get together.
Yeah, I think maybe the kind of keys would be how how the scene would work out, including the. You know, accountability and the education person to make sure it's a success.
Okay, um all right. So that brings us now to our question on the presentations. You need to keep all questions, comments on this.
Yeah, so this is probably going to be a question for Chief Financial Officer, that thing about the funding, funding issues, and I wasn't quite sure. So we seem to have a still the subsidy. Uh that is the state's not covering our costs, right, for transportation and particularly it's not covering their cost for transportation for McKinney Vento students and. Such as patient students. And you said, so my understanding is, you know, so in the legislature this time, this has been an issue that's been on the table for a while and they basically hunted this session. They actually got down to the point where they passed it all in the House and passed it all in the Senate and then the two couldn't agree and then it's. Time ran it. So, so all they have is essentially some, what they call the face, transportation safety net, which is in their their budget. And so it sounds like. You know, we applied for for some of that money.
Uh huh. So what happened is, is the um, the state had gave a um a document that basically said, here's your last year's. You know, expenditures, here's your current year revenues. If you have um less. Expenditures in your revenue, you pretty much don't qualify.
So, oh, they're comparing last year's, oh, that's the trip.
That was it. And that's why. And so what they did is they they basically uh made sure that districts weren't wasting their time because the the. The formula to do it was very interesting. So instead of districts wasting their time, they just took the two data points and said, basically, you don't qualify, don't even. You know, don't go for it. And so, yeah, so we did not qualify.
Okay, so that. We're gonna take a hit to the tune of whatever, three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. Uh. Okay, so I think that is complaining to the legislature there. They're obviously next time they're gonna. I mean, they say they're actually get serious about it and address it next time, but it's, okay, so we're left with. Having to eat at this time. Again, yeah. Let's see. Yeah, I guess this, this is more of their. Like in time, many educations, many transportation stuff. I do appreciate um. A couple of things about the transportation department. First of all, the continuing hundred percent efficiency. So decisions are actually running. At a very high efficiency rate. Uh as I've mentioned, I appreciate the efforts, ongoing efforts to get an electric bus. It would be really, really great. They're, they're pricey, but. But, you know, finding grants for them is the way, is the way that we do that. So that's great. And um. As usual, I appreciate the efforts by our transportation director to uh. You know, minimize these, these subsidies for McKinney Vento and sped students by doing some creative things with um. Destinations and getting more, more of the students on yellow buses and, and hopefully um ongoing battle, but hopefully the legislature. Ongoing battle, but hopefully the legislature will actually. You know, it's funny because they they set up a whole commission on their own to try and figure this out. And then they just ended up funding, which is really disappointing, but anyway, good job by our administration department.
I agree.
Any questions, comments on the table? Thank you. Presentation is good. The only question is personal experience again all every night. In my shelter is late during the period every day, called the teacher, I call the. Tenant's office. And. Talked to the kid. And there's not a problem, but I still get the wrong problem every night. So how are those kind of things affecting Mr. Vincent? Because. This could, this kid should be way over the limit on number of times he can be. Yeah, and yeah. So. That's just the M and O, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, something that we'll take back and discuss. I just want to say that our state in school coordinator did a phenomenal job.
Yes.
For the beginning of the year to now, so yes. So that's something that we'll take back and discuss.
Yeah, I did really appreciate the, we don't very often get, you know, a really nice plan with timelines and dates and everything and I appreciate it. I'm doing that, so we'll be able to hopefully see some. Some outcomes in terms of improved attendance, particularly next year as the program gets fully fully implemented, so.
Yes, particularly, yes.
Well, it sounds like. Those students have a little bit, I mean, they're going after the same problem, they just have a different approach to it, yeah, which. Is fun, yeah.
And yeah, just one second, really phenomenal. She also has completed the attendance manual, so a lot of hard work is gone in her case. Any additional questions here?
I guess I would like to. So a lot of the, we talked about the recent equity tool and it just appears to me like we, looking at our website, we actually have two different rates and equity. Tool kit, now one says it's a rubric that is attached to the website relating to the recent equity. District White Team and then the other one, I think it's.
We use the one that's dated twenty twenty.
Yeah, I know. It seems like we should kind of. Combine those into into one. I think I think there's an awful lot of overlap between the two. And it just, it's a little confusing to have two things on a website called recent equity toolkit. I think, yeah, it would be just too good to combine.
Okay.
If we can do that. I mean, one is is a rubric, but it has kind of a different set of questions from the other one. Yeah, at least if we just get it in the documents or everybody's working on the same page would be.
I know that was a fairly certain house discussion that the distribution equity team was having kind of the beginning of the year.
Okay.
And I wonder, you know, because they intended that tool, not to get too much of that away from this, but. The intent of that tool is really just to provide a starting place where there's some like. These are some general things that want to make sure and play, check some questions that want to ask and now there's a really good checklist to be followed. But I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to really think, whether it's the distribution equity team or us with the P A with your R P C S D folks. Just around, you know, what is the best way to do that? Maybe it's not a toolkit, maybe it's just a. Five high level questions to consider, I don't know, maybe, maybe. I just, I wonder if that whole thing is we just thought about. But definitely, for sure.
Well, but for us to do the work, we should, we should all be pretty much on the same page of what we're trying to accomplish and. How we're trying to evaluate.
Absolutely.
So that we can, because that's when when things come forward to what I try and do as much as possible is. Okay, let me look at the proposal and push it against the, you know, the criterion, we're going to use the recent equity and does it fit, does it not fit, that kind of thing. So that's that's just, yeah, I think some.
Is that possible? Only into one policy or?
I don't think, well, it's, we have on our website two of these different things that kind of. Call themselves the toolkit.
Yeah, I know, I I'm.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Policy wise?
Oh.
Or do we just ask the website operator to put it together or? I just want to know the procedure. It will take to some degree like the literacy lens that we the board should be using. Is a little bit, is gonna be a little bit different, right, than what's being used at this level two? And so I wonder if. Kind of that point, maybe there is a policy. Review that we could do to kind of add that component in there on these, this is like. You know, understanding of like, here's the board's recent equity lens, here's the the questions that we should be asking ourselves every time we see something. Here's the questions that, you know, folks making decisions in the district should be asking. Okay, maybe let's table this for a a bit of discussion too.
Okay. So the other question I was wondering, we're talking about. Let's see, okay, John, yeah, the reading, reading intervention program using. Kind of level literacy. Now, my understanding of level literacy is that's. And this may be an older version of that, but the Bumpus and Benel stuff, which. My understanding that doesn't have phonics emphasis at all, that's one of the ones that went off on. The path that doesn't really.
Focus on.
Doesn't really. Consistent with good reading science evidence. Am I wrong? The bitch, when you say level literacy and you said it has a phonics. Big enough phonics component to it?
It should. What I would need to do is check and see at the schools because they have been updated. I know.
Yeah.
Got here.
Yeah.
They were ordering new LLI material and kits, and so I would need to check in with the schools and get back.
Okay, yeah, because that just struck me as those two aren't consistent, but it may be that they've updated their, because that's. That's the whole discussion about reading, reading programs and and the fact that we went down the path that wasn't. Very good a number of years ago in that particular thing, so. Let's, okay, the other fact to kind of the the implementation of the recent equity toolkit, so. In the in the discussion here, you're talking, we talk about. ML students, which is very clearly a focus for since we're forty percent. And I also, the other question I was wondering, you know, we we have, we see in our data the racial achievement gaps, you know. And so so you've indicated that there is going to be a focus on Latino male students, okay, that's one of those.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if there's. Other, I mean, the the rate of gaps that are consistent here are the white Asian students are above and the black, Latino. Indigenous and suburban drivers have a lower, and so. Question is, do we need? And I think, and yeah, do we need some focus, some some, you know, stated focus on some of those other groups as well? Because that's, I mean, no matter which race and decade we're using, part of the core is identify. And we see it in the data, the data is presented to us and we see those gaps. So that's step one and then the step two is kind of, well, let's focus on those groups, figure out, you know, what they need. And then.
And so to for this particular project, one of the things that it did working with the secondary principal is that. What is your target area?
Right.
And that was the target area that was named, doesn't mean that we aren't focusing on the other ones, but this is the target area that was named. Just as though at the elementary where we have our board priority students. And that consists of several racial groups.
Okay.
So in terms of working with secondary, this was the group that was named at the time. But it doesn't mean to the exclusion of other groups.
Okay. Okay. I was curious about this Queens program, is that who? Where does that come out of?
The young Queens program is at the high school.
No, but I mean, who, is it an organization?
It's an organization, I forget the name of the organization, but I can get that to you. They've been working with the young ladies for two years now.
Okay, good. Yeah, it's just not one I'd heard before.
Yeah, there's lives, I can't think of the other people, but I'll get it.
So it's a separate, it's a national organization or state organization or?
It's a local organization, local CBA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, thanks.
I love the fact that you were. You were, of course, offering lightly environmental. Class and some of our tech classes are really engaging the students in ways.
They are.
And does that have to mean the issue? And so how do we keep going on that? Does it mean that engagement piece?
You can see some of the presentation tonight, how students are really engaged in the major bridge that we went to. That presentation a couple of weeks ago.
I went to one of the classes today at C B, you know, they have. Used math skills to draw. Maps of the school or of the perfect school and the plot, they plotted on their graph, fish. Were swimming pools. It's great engaging project for these kids to enjoy on the purpose or.
They probably did not affect the energy.
Every couple of years they revisited. That's on a person's supposed to do, but. Yeah. Okay, next is the athletic department.
And congratulations on the work of this. Athletic director, I think. Which group was it? The cheer group, yeah, 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 so. And, yeah, getting going, the. I'm glad, it it was great to get the intramural sports program going. I'm glad that there's going to be some workaround. Coordinating it a little bit of all the other actual programs so that the students can participate in as many of them as possible and they don't, because actually they're just kind of running over. Of each other. So that would be great. And I also appreciate the. Yeah, introducing. The girls soccer team, the sportmanship award, that's always been a strong point of the classroom, I suppose, there's always your sort of programs. Is. Pardon me?
It was softball.
No, it's a soccer here, but. Really softball?
Yeah, well, she was soft.
Oh, okay, the fall, yeah.
Well, maybe they did in the.
Or maybe, yeah, there may have been multiples of them. We're gonna see which which season is softball. Great, okay, I'm looking at the fall season for girls soccer, it says sportmanship award. Spring season. Fast pitch, is there so pitch or fast pitch, fast pitch? Yeah, they didn't, okay, so great. Another person about sports. Yeah, like I was saying, soccer, I think over the years, it's known for its, you know. So, oh, there's another one in the girl swimming in the fall, sportmanship award, so. Appreciate that. I know Dave, I mean, he was a student here for many years and so he's continuing the. The great sportmanship tradition, also like. Introduction of badminton, which is really interesting sport, just great for students that, you know, may not want to be. Doing some of the more traditional ones, but, you know, the important thing is to get lots of students out moving and badminton will do that for you.
That has participated in this awesome.
Yeah, I've never seen lots of students walking around with their band. Thing in their in their backpack, so frustrating.
This one thought, you're an amazing work home program, no doubt. One thing that just kind of came up really close, looking at all the amount of young people participating, you know, I see. I see boys, girls, and I know that we are in an environment, in a system, particularly around sports, that really is. Established around the binary, but I wonder what opportunities we have to really think about how we are providing opportunities. For our training on binary students and not just opportunities, but I've been reflecting a lot on the idea of like active inclusion versus passive inclusion. Right, they say the passive inclusion is, oh, well, you know, of course, not a very angry student, you can participate, whatever sport you want to play, right? Versus really being intentional about saying, yeah, this this is for you, right? And not only are you, not only can you be what you want here, right? So like, how are we, how are we really? Creating a a culture, talking about sports, doing whatever that actually tells our non-binary students. That they have a place in that sport and that's so important because. Gender queer people have historically been isolated and shut out from sports because of the binary component. So just something to think about, I think, in the future, maintaining and building these programs. Is how can we really show up for our non-binary gender queer students in this way, not just saying you can do what you want, but like really like. This is where you belong, you know, so how can we do that? And I think it might, you know, just require a lot of. Great conversation, maybe, and like some updated policies and thinking about maybe what sports or how sports might come along and defend and tackle them. But I just wanted to. Next is the McKinney Vento.
So I guess this is gonna be, yeah, kind of a question going back to the academic acceleration, so we got data that's, you know, significant. You know, gaps for our McKinney Vento students. I know over the years. Graduation rate has actually been pretty good in some years where, you know, right at the top of the state and 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 the graduation over. And some of the, you know, math and reading scores, you know, there's significant. So I guess I have to ask, are we? What are we thinking about? You know, are there, I I know. I think. It's a, it's an issue that's in that the legislature. You know, thinks about quite a bit and they're, they are starting to inch a little more, I know. From like I talked about, you know, looking for those grants, because there are, they're out there, but. Question is, and I know our our staff here. That support these students do an outstanding job, but. You know, is there anything more that we can do to figure out how to maybe support their, particularly looks like. You know, K through eight. Educational experience.
There's a lot more that we can do. When we're in the classrooms, we. We offer assistance to every student, not. Identifying or knowing whether this student is experiencing homelessness or not. But we continue to offer, you know, the interventions, we continue to work with the students individually. Ms. Hertz, Ms. Abdo, they continue to work diligently with all of the families that need the support. And we would just keep doing that. They did a phenomenal job on presenting the information. And working with all the families that need it, but there isn't any one. Thing in particular that we can say that we need to do different other than continuing to do the work that we're doing with our families and our students.
Is there? When you look at the numbers, three hundred and whatever.
Eighty seven, yeah.
That's over the year.
Yes, yes.
Not a moment in time.
That's up to, up to now, up until May.
We have certainly have had that in a, in a, it's. So some of them may have been here only in September. And some of them may have only been here in November. Some of them may have been on here.
Oh, yeah.
Does that? Mobility issue with the McKinney Vento students, which is real, affect the test, the data? The test scores. I can't quite put it together whether it would or not.
It could, because some people could be coming in right as we are testing.
Right.
And some students are coming in at the very end and some people have been here at the very beginning. So it just.
Or taking a test and not the possible. So there's, you can really separate that out or show that in the data.
It would take some time. It would take a little.
I'm just trying to tease that out a little bit. To see if, if the scores are skewed. Because of the mobility.
Not necessarily skewed. It just gives us information in terms of. At, at this point in time, this is where this student scored and we worked with this student up until. They were.
When you put it on a chart.
Yeah.
That.
That gives us some additional things to work on.
So. Also, I, I wanted to follow up one question about kids that are fostered because that's different from your Kenyatta kids. Do we have any idea of how many of these three hundred and eighty-seven kids are actually fostered kids in our district? And were they sent, were they our kids sent out of district that are now, we're bringing them back as McKinney Vento? Or are they kids that came from the district and were being fostered by families in our district?
I can answer the fact that we have seven families that have been identified as, or seven students that have been identified as. Foster kids who are experiencing, yeah. Foster kids.
Okay.
Who are in this number.
So I thought it was a very small number here because we don't have very many. So, yeah.
Yeah, and true, the mobility issue does enter into the, you know, the impact, if for no other reason, because. I mean, when students are switching. Whether it's districts, schools, whatever, there's, there's this big adjustment. So it has to pass out an impact. So.
And their focus is not necessarily, their focus is survival.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And so this. Yeah, comparing, I'm not sure, I guess, I don't know, I might look into this, but the, probably a better comparison would be to how our. McKinney Vento students are doing relative to other districts, McKinney Vento students rather than to, yeah.
So.
Okay, if you're better, maybe for this, but anyway. Yeah, I know. I mean, I know that doing it there has been a fantastic job for years and years. And so I have no doubt that they're out. Finding whatever they, their resources they can.
Yes.
To help whatever possible.
Yeah, I do worry about the workload that they carry. Especially, well, one of them has three schools and then one has two schools. And they're just serving a lot of things.
Which, yeah, it's, I mean, then, yeah, it's. So the legislature, you know, provides, you know, essentially zero dollars to a school based on the number of. McKinney Vento students to have. I mean, there's these little grants which are nice, but they're frankly peanuts compared to what it's.
What is needed to serve students.
That's another one of the only discussion with the, with the legislature for them to really get real about. They tend to, the problem is McKinney Vento is a federal law. And so the legislature, well, it's not our problem. Well. But that's where we are. So. You'll keep working.
Because they started, by the way, by sending the patent.
Yeah.
It's a real. You know, champion of that, but no, that don't dollars that came on one day. And she's a former school board member.
Yeah. Well, there is some kind of, but again.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. Can we put on the agenda sometimes to talk about this security person and overall district security person? Obviously, the whole district. They'll likely be a consequence. I wonder if that would fall, I mean, there's probably some. I don't think that's probably the only thing that we could think about, like personnel, right? And how. That was just really what you want that to be. Okay, so move to our action items for this evening. The first one of the human resources staffing report.
So.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Um, the second is the approval of the. Sorry, approval of out of endorsement, out of grade span teacher plans.
Second.
All in favor? I. There's a big rule of the future sound skills center contract.
So.
Yeah. Now, all in favor? Um, this is the approval of out of state travel press for N C D P here up in our conference.
So.
On favor.
Hi.
And next would be a resolution number nine three one, which is delegating authority to King Cal, King, King Co. Congress.
So.
All right. And then that brings us to our last opportunity. If you are doing this online, let us talk or anyone from it, you can do so by raising your hand. We'll type in your names in the chat. Let's see, you have one. Hand raised. Oh, Julie. So I'm wondering if. Julie, were you hoping to add a public comment?
Oh, I was just, just had my hand raised during our presentation to clarify that. Foster care and McKinney Vento are completely two different programs. So the ones, the students that we identified that are receiving services under the foster care system. Are not, or not in the McKinney Vento number.
I'm so sorry. I didn't see your hand raised on there before.
Thank you.
Again, so sorry about that. I'm going to be able to see that. Okay, any, any other comments for this time? Just a second. All right, then we'll move to adjourn our meeting.
Sure.
Was on the favor. So, right, we are.
It is.